It's a public hearing. It's only for the...
What, what are you gonna announce?
Um...
It's live.
It's live?
Okay, so, um, what do you need me to announce?
Can I just say that we had technical difficulties and we're now up?
So what Deborah said. We have technical difficulties. We are now up broadcasting live. We've gone through the consent agenda, the citizen comments, and we're in the middle of the budget hearing. What I said.
What he said. Okay. The announcement at 6:00.
All right.
Thanks.
Um, this is just kind of the key takeaways from the proposed general fund budget. It is balanced, as I stated before. We're investing in equipment and training for the police department. We created a new tourism and business development position, as I mentioned before. The ultimate goal of that position is to lower the tax burden for our citizens by driving more business and more tourism to Castroville. And then, the cost of living increases, as I mentioned before. And this all relies on maintaining the existing tax rate of the .5233. And it's kind of, again, part of our plan, our long-range strategy. We plan to hold that rate the same this year, next year, and we'll see about the following year. And it really is gonna depend on how quickly development happens. We all know that housing is changing, and with those changes, you know, with the market changes that we see with inflation, et cetera, there's no certainties, right? But I think we have a very solid financial plan for the city, and I think this budget represents that. That's all I have for the budget.
Any comments from... Okay. Then we'll close the public hearing at 6:01. Next, we have public hearing number three on the proposed FY '23 property tax rate. We're gonna open this public hearing at 6:02.
Mayor, for this, I also have a presentation, just for the benefit of those present. Some of this you've seen before, some of it is, again, some graphs that we created to better convey the information. So, you'll see there, this is the exemptions for the county and partial exemptions. The, kind of, the key takeaway is that City Castroville is the only city in the county that offers a freeze for year over 65 folks. And we have a $10,000, $10,000 credit. What is that called?
Exception.
Exception.
Exemption.
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 So there's, here's how our total rate is kind of comprised, and you'll see, again, the rates stay the same. And what you'll, what you should notice is that in the 2022, 2022, 2023 budget year, fiscal year, the amount of the debt service has increased considerably by about 50%, and that is due to the debt that was just issued by the general fund. And it's also according to kind of our plan, is we're going to create, put more of the city's rate into that debt service side. And we believe that as the city grows, one, it'll give us the ability to issue more, more debt in the future, and two, there will be the opportunity, I believe, especially if the growth happens, to lower the tax rate as the county has done this year. I think we may be able in the same position in three, four, or five years, again, depending on the rate of the growth. This is our, kind of, how the calculation works, based on various home values. So, you kind of look at that chart, and if you know where your house is and the range of its value, you can calculate what the city tax would be that you would owe, based on, no, that's not your total tax bill, that's only the city's portion. That's the reason we calculated this. For every $100,000, it's pretty simple math, it's $523. And I think, yeah, we have the average home value, maybe on another slide. These are the property tax jurisdictions, and what, out of your tax bill, basically, what percentage they represent. And, kind of, no surprise is that the ISD would make up the largest portion, because they are the largest rate. They make up about 52% of the average homeowner's tax bill in Castroville. The next largest is the City of Castroville, at that .5233. And then, you also have the Medina County. And for Medina County, we, we lumped, because they have, you have our district's road tax, you have the road tax from the county, and then you have the county tax. They're, all of their taxes together is, is very similar, the total rate is very similar to our total rate to run the city. It's .5229, as you see on the screen, uh, here. So that's the to, that's the total county rate. And then you add to that the ISD, the ESD, the City of Castroville, and then the hospital district. And the hospital district and the ESD, for those who don't know, they are limited by law to the max rate that they can charge. And then that's it.
Any questions, comments? All right, we're gonna close the public hearing, then, at 6:05. Next item, consider and take appropriate action on an ordinance adopting the FY '20, '22, '23 annual operating budget.
No, we have a public hearing for the tax rate.
We just did that.
What were we doing on the budget? I'm sorry, I missed the times. We had the budget first and then the tax.
The budget you closed at 5:53.
You opened at 5:53.
We opened at 5:53, but you closed the budget.
Yes.
6:01. And then we opened up the tax rate at 6:02, closed at 6:05.
All right, so, next item. Consider and take appropriate action on ordinance adopting the FY '20, '22, '23 annual operating budget. Do I have a motion on this?
I make a motion to, uh, to approve the FY '20, '22, '23 operating budget as presented.
Great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
I'm sorry. Hold on just a second. I apologize. I think there's a roll call vote that has to be taken.
Yeah, there is.
So, we need to...
Okay.
For the budget or for the...
Okay.
There's the budget and the ratification has to be, I think, by roll call. If you're waiting to...
All right. So, uh, we'll... We'll do a roll call vote, right?
That's fine, go for it.
I'm sorry, Mr. King made the motion.
Yes.
Mr. Kerry seconded. Need to know, it's a man, can we have it on record?
Yes. So we'll start with District One.
Aye.
District Two.
Aye.
District Three.
Aye.
District Four. District Five.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And we'll do the same for the tax rate.
Perfect, thank you. Next item, consider and take appropriate action on an ordinance setting the 2022 tax rate of 0.5233 per $100 of taxable valuation for the tax year beginning January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2023.
Your timestamp was 6:07.
Okay. 6:07. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it again.
Do we have to read the bold for the motion?
We should read the order.
Because it's in bold, and it says it must be read following the law?
My question is, do we need a roll call on this one or the next one? It's the next one, yes. So this one doesn't require a roll call, but...
But it does.
Phil, if you'll amend your motion just to read what is printed, please, thank you.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of tax rate of 0.5233, which is effectively a 12.68% increase in the tax rate.
Please hold on. I second that.
All right. And no roll call?
No.
No, not on this one. It'll be on the next one.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item, consider and take appropriate action on an ordinance ratifying the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget that would require raising more revenue from property taxes than in the fiscal year 2021, 2022, for the use and support of the municipal government for the City of Castroville.
And this will be a roll call vote, once you give the motions.
Okay. Do I have a motion on this?
So moved.
Great. Do I have a second?
I second it.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor? Sorry. Roll call. Say yea or nay. District One.
Yea.
District Two.
Yea.
District Three.
Yea.
District Four.
Yea.
District Five.
Yea.
Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, next item, Medina County ESD Number One Monthly Report. We have Fire Chief Clint Cook, and we're starting this at 6:10.
Good evening. Did y'all get a copy of this in your packet? So...
And I've got it up on the screen for you.
Okay. Sorry, my first page is missing in my packet, so I'm reading it off my phone.
Is that this page right here?
Yeah. Yeah, it would be. That's fine, I can see it, sort of. All right, so the city itself actually only had five emergency resp, or five emergency responses that the fire department responded to within the boundaries of the actual city. Now, the station that sits in the city responded to several more than that. We've reduced our average response times down to between 11 and 12 minutes across our whole district, and again, we cover 248, 249 square miles. In the City of Castroville, we've reduced our average response times down to between five to six minutes, up to nine minutes in the evenings. Beginning, as quick as we can get some folks hired, we're getting ready to expand the staffing at the Castroville station to 24 hours a day. We're hiring at least one more person per day, and then we'll have some volunteers that 'll ride with them at night. So that, right now, we're, we're staffed for fire response from 0600 to 1800, seven days a week, and so we're gonna increase that to 24 hours a day. Hopefully, have that done by the end of this calendar year. Our fiscal year budget starts on 10/1, and that, that position was approved. So that should help continue to reduce our response times within the city and the close area of the city. Right now, we have 47 volunteers that are actively responding to emergency incidents across our district. We've really ramped up our, you know, training and organization this, this past month. They had just over 230 something hours of training amongst the volunteers. Your EMS is still covered by Allegiance EMS, but that is us also, so our ESD is responsible for both fire and EMS. In the, our district had 137 responses between our three medic units, and then, and that was for the month of July. This report, I don't get the report until usually mid-month for the prior month. So these do include runs that were outside the city. I'll break down what's within the city. And as a reminder, we've ordered our own medic units to assume the direct control of EMS within our whole ESD, and so we're gonna merge that between the fire, fire department, and so it'll be a fire and EMS department under one organization, so we won't have a contractor in here anymore. Hopefully, no longer than two years. Our biggest holdup right now is just the receiving the medic units, the actual units themselves, so we're looking at about a two-year timeframe, just to get those received.
How many units is that?
I'm sorry, what's that?
How many units is that?
So, we are actually going to increase, right now, our district funds three medic units within our 248 square miles. We have one up in Maico, we have one in Rio Medina, and we have one in Castroville. So when we, when we bring it in-house, we're actually gonna add one to Lacoste. So we'll have four medic units up 24 hours a day compared to the three we have now. And then, at least two of those units will be guaranteed to be cross-staffed between firefighter, paramedics, versus right now, where EMS only does EMS. So streamline those services a little bit. So you'll see a posting, or, you know, our, we'll have a posting out for Assistant Chief of EMS within the next, probably gonna post somewhere around December, looking for a first quarter, into the first quarter hire date for us. So we're still working on a public outreach program, but we'll, we'll continuously be involved anytime we're invited. I know we'll be at your National Night Out presentation over at the airport. We have finalized a new website, and it just went live last week, so it's medinacountyesd1.org. We're consistently updating that with a little bit more modern information. So ISO, we've got a meeting on Friday, and I'm hoping to know by Friday where I think we're gonna land. It won't be our final grade, but I've got a meeting with the consultant on Friday. They were onsite last week. We did some assessments, did some videos for them to show what the capabilities are, and he's been compiling that, but I, I do suspect that we're, we're, you're gonna see a significant increase, I just don't know what that is, but I'm hoping to know where we expect it to land, maybe within the next two weeks. From a recruitment standpoint, we're getting ready to kick off for our own academy. Right now, I've got 38 people signed up for it. Now, some of those are internal, then I've got about 12 brand-new volunteers that have signed up, so we're, we'll continue to add to our volunteer base. Again, we're, we're a combination fire department now, but we're still 95% volunteer. And then attached, you've got some statistical data, and then I'll take any questions you might have.
One quick question, just for me. On National Night Out, are we all invited?
Yes.
Okay. On your report, it's saying, "We got everything we're invited to," I just wanna make sure you got invited to that.
Yes, yes, we were.
It's on the flyer that, that was handed out.
Are you jumping too?
But yeah, we, we will be there. Chief Coler called me again, just to verify, actually, yesterday.
Are you jumping too?
He said no.
Are you driving it or following it?
Oh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not either, I am not, I'm not the surprise guest whoever's doing that, so...
The mayor and his mother will be jumping out of a plane at National Night Out.
Nice.
Please clean up room.
So nice.
That'll, that'll bring in the crowds.
One of them will be more terrified than the other, but I won't tell you which.
I don't, I'm with you.
I'll tell you.
So, yeah. So any other questions you may have?
Thank you for all you do.
I, I covered the new apparatus last month, right?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you for everything you and your people do.
Absolutely. You're making great strides. All right, next item, above the den of the roof repair.
Yeah, I, I did not know they were gonna continue working. I will have a conversation with the contractor tomorrow about this.
They'll be fixed.
They'll be done, yes.
If I say, you know, it's, put up a little noise, at least it's getting fixed.
Absolutely. Next item is city administrator report.
Okay. I've got a couple items. One of them's on poppy seeding, I'm, I'm just gonna mention that real quick. So, Priscilla stole my thunder, but, um, yes, we purchased some seeds, and Pat's not wrong, that's the cheapest part of it, really, because seeds are not that expensive. We bought five pounds each, gosh, I can't remember how much. He told me, but, uh...
It's a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot. They do a lot. It's like, yeah, it's acres, because like, like each couple ounces does 1,300 square feet or something, anyway, it's, it's a lot. So, you have to get water. And I was gonna point out that, that hand watering's still allowed. Just hand water all the... Please.
We had grown out there, but the first year, it's the year, so they may not terminate the trees. They need to be extra, period, as far as it's grounded. So, whether you ever out to the citizen, I just texted, uh, that, why do you amount to the citizen, we need to be sure that you're not generating that, like, you wasn't just not seeding last year, but ground is like that, she, she, that's why we're gonna have to cultivate, it's my thought.
So, so I have this question, because me and plants don't get along. Oh, no, I've killed cactus.
Yeah, you, me, both, yeah.
Is there gonna be, like, little instructions?
Yeah, so, one of the great things that aren't, are that Pat acquired or was able to get a while back, was a horticulturist, who actually provided, here's how to take care of a poppy, here's how to plant it, all of that. So there is written instructions that we have that we will hand out with the seeds, but I've still gotta figure out who's putting all of them together and all that kind of stuff. But the good news is, we are working on it. I know that Pat spelled doom and gloom, we're at the last minute. Okay, Pat, but October is when they really be planted, so we have a couple weeks still, and we're, we're working on it. Some, some money had, anyway, we've got other things that are happening at the city.
Well, on the, on the instructions, sorry. Does it say how long to water, if hand watering?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Because they're gonna ask that question.
Yeah.
Well, and I think that the points of distribution are, you know, the city locations, I also think we should go to the local businesses and offer it up to them.
Yeah, it's in my report, is that we're, one of the things that we will do is try to find, one, give them the residents, but also offer them up to businesses. But again, I gotta find someone to make them, and I don't have anything to give them yet. When we have somebody to give them, that's what we'll do. And then I think the library is a great opportunity as well. You can have a program about this, that you can give out there. What's that?
The hardware store.
The hardware store.
We sell seeds all the time?
Yeah, we know someone who's there.
You can't resell it.
We, we will, we will work on it. No, you can resell it, you just, we have to split.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Leave that. Also, if you're gonna announce something to anyone?
Yes.
It may be, we want to hand that information about why, why poppies and the poppy poll. You know, there's a poll that was written out, 001, related to poppies. You know, all that.
Yeah, maybe we'll just do a QR code, and it'll take them to the site, and it'll tell them all that stuff.
Yeah, or I'm giving poppies up.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, we can put it on a website, and it'll go to there, and it'll have pictures of past poppies, and, yes.
I think a lot of you probably don't understand why poppies are so big here, so...
Okay. Perfect.
There are top three in Texas, there are top, plus El Paso.
They were asking.
Because they're beautiful.
Hey, if El Paso can make them, we can make them. They're a lot drier there.
They've got a lot of money on it.
May I continue?
Sorry.
Beyond poppies?
Suppose.
I, I never knew. Uh, City Hall and Police Department repairs are underway, as you heard. The City Hall repairs are gonna end up being around $13,000. The PD repairs, it's not the replacement, is a little less than $9,000 to get that done. Once this is done, then the cosmetic is the next step, to come in and fix the windows. There's a lot of windows that have had issues, where the wood's rotted, or the seals, those types of issues. And we'll try to fix any places where there's been intrusion, but we'll do it in a way that is kosher with our old building. So we're not, it's really about making the repairs and making them the right way. Then, kiosk is live. I've already had both positive and negative feedback about the kiosk. Some folks have not had a, a, a great experience their first time using it. My recommendation to anybody who goes and uses it is use the barcode scanner, and then if that doesn't work, you know, there's a couple other ways to look up your address, but it, we have tested it about eight or nine different times as staff, and feel that we can confidently say it works reliably and consistently, so we will get people trained up on how to use that, but that is live.
If you wanna use it, you go there with your bill and a check?
Yep, or cash.
Or cash.
Or card. It takes cash, card, or a check, and it will...
Is it gonna take your check, or is it just gonna read it and give it back to you?
No, it'll take and keep your check. Yeah. It takes and, and keeps your cash as well, don't give that back. I know.
As long as it takes some card back.
Anyway, so one of the things that we'll talk about is the credit card fees. I think as this thing gains popularity, we're gonna wanna, and this will be part of our fee discussion at the next meeting, is whether or not it makes sense to waive credit card fees, if it's, makes it really true more, more advantageous for the city. That's something that staff will be looking into, so we can give you more information about, well, what would that cost, what would that look like, et cetera. The National Night Out, you heard me mention Terry and David and Darren Ham and Devin Frederson, and a whole group of people have been working very hard to plan out what's gonna be a really exciting event. There'll be food trucks and vendors and just Border Patrol, and just all kinds of folks and, and agencies and stuff out there, so it really should be a good time. I think last time, there were 600 people that came through at the last National Night Out, so there'll be a car show there, and there's gonna be a lot of fun stuff on that night, and it's October 4th? Fourth? I just know this. Yes, the first Tuesday in October. Whoever that date is.
Fourth?
Fourth?
Fourth.
Okay, I should've gone with my gut. October 4th. Veterans Day flights will actually not be on November 11th, but be on November 12th, which is a Saturday. American Legion, the commander at the post is working with David to get folks signed up. I saw that email just before this meeting started, so hopefully we'll get some good, some good flights out of that. There's gonna be a parade. It's a pretty exciting event. This is part of what Dream Flights, if you may recall, we made a kind of a deal with them. This is one of their national headquarters. Dream Flights is becoming a big deal. They've actually got a lot of national press. I was just at an airport meeting with Counselor Stein and Darren Bond, who's affiliated, who's on our joint airport zoning board, and I believe also on our airport advisory board, maybe. Okay, he was just there for the meeting, so, but he's affiliated with Dream Flights and was reporting that they're getting a lot of attention. So one of the things that he and I are gonna work on is having our, our new old logo, our refurbished logo, put on their planes, so it can get a little more attention that way as well. So, um, that's gonna be a really exciting day. Again, there'll be a parade, et cetera, that'll go from, I think, September Square to, up to the airport. Parks Building is been, has been ordered. We did have a location change, so it wasn't Location A, and it wasn't Location B, it's Secret Location C, which is just up the hill from, it's, so, we did have engineers go out and look at it, this, we did everything while, while Phil was out of town, but not on purpose, just the way it worked out. There, one of the concerns, obviously, is the, where the equalization basin's gonna go, and what we're gonna do if we're gonna end up pump jacking our, our, pipe jacking the, the underpipes. So we moved it just up the hill. I think it's gonna be a really good location, it's gonna work out. That's underway. And then, and, and I think there was a more in-depth report provided on August 23rd, so you can go back and look at that. And then, our journey together, save the best for last, it really has been an extraordinary thing to watch. I did not, I really and truly, the first meeting, I thought, there's, there's, there might be four or five people here, because, I mean, council usually pretty, not very well attended, there's not a lot of folks. I wasn't sure what we'd see, but to my great excitement and, and surprise, it's been very well attended. We've had over 100 folks attend every meeting, closer to 120 or so, and about 80% of those have been, have gone to every single meeting. So there's, there's, you know, 10 to 15%, they're kind of flowing in and out because of obligations and other things. But I think the first speaker was riveting, did a great job. He talked about, basically, new urbanism and, and things like that, these different, so our commitment, the commitment that the Castroville Contraications Society, the mayor and others who kind of helped put this together, was, we're gonna bring various zoning concepts. We're not saying these are solutions, or what we're gonna do here, but we're gonna bring ideas from experts about how you deal with growth. And I think they've really, really kind of knocked it out of the park. The first gentleman, again, spoke about those types of ideas, form-based design, and how to respect Castroville without making it look like an Alsatian house in drag, I think was his, his term, which I thought was hilarious. And then, the next lady kind of talked about our history, what makes us unique. And then the third presenter talked about historic districts and how they work, and some options for establishing historic districts and using those as a preservation tool. Of course, we are, we are aware of some of that, we've done that, we've got 96 kind of individual historic districts, if you think about it that way. And now, tomorrow, we have the final lecture, and that'll be about the missing middle, and[1661.52] And the gentleman speaking is going to talk about basically a new way to think about residential development and compatibility with other uses and how to do that in a way that is respectful to the community but allows for a natural or kind of a organic and complementary existence between different types of uses. Residences, offices, multifamily, I mean, just all, whatever. And it's kind of fits in with that form-based design. So I think I'm really expecting that to be great. And then the Capstone Program that you heard David mention earlier, David Mers, when he spoke, is going to be probably two weeks from now. We're going to see if the Braden Keller Center is available and try to hold it there so it won't be next door because now it's going to be on our dime, our budget. So we're hoping we can do it there. And that'll be a facilitated discussion of basically, and we'll have Bryce Cox, who you've met from our law firm, present that. He will do kind of a problems identification, talk about what are some of the issues and challenges facing Castroville from this growth? What are some of the issues and challenges facing Castroville from our existing code of ordinances? Why hasn't it been codified, for instance? What are the issues there that are preventing it from being codified? Because it doesn't comport with law and those types of things. So we'll talk about that. And then we'll talk about the presentations that were made and maybe some additional information that Bryce may be aware of to identify and seek potential solutions and feedback from these people that have attended from our, from our citizens. So I'm really looking forward to that. That'll be, again, the Capstone. And where we go from there, I think, is following that meeting, we, we need to bring it back to council and have a little bit of a workshop and decide, okay, where do we go from here? We had once talked about UDO process. We're going to revisit that. We're also going to look at the development agreements and the policies for development agreement and how we include some of these pieces into our development agreements, what's appropriate to include, what isn't. So again, I could not be more pleased with how this has turned out and frankly surprised. I was not a total pessimist, but I just didn't know what to expect. So I think it's done really, really well. So congratulations, Mayor. That's all I have in my report. If you have any questions or comments, I'm open to this.
I think that, as I've talked to people about the Caps, we're calling it the Capstone. This is a chance for, we've, we've heard from these people and I know that people are very respectful about the speakers. And I want to make sure that we hit this head-on. There are some things that people love, some people, some things that people hate. I remember the, the feeling of air sucking out of the building when light rail was discussed. So it's, it's a chance to hit these all head-on and for people to come and talk about their fears in this process, the things that they agree with, the things that they don't. So this is a chance for us to be just raw as a community and, and challenge what we're doing. So I think it's a great opportunity. I hope that all of council can make it. Deborah will coordinate with you before we book the day and please continue to get the word out. These have been really well attended, better than some really highly controversial things. This has been the best attended thing that I've seen ever. So I think we've got really good community support, but we could use more. So thank you for, for all your part in that. Any other questions, comments on the? Okay, great. Thank you. Next item, consider and take appropriate action on recommending of removal of alternate airport advisory board member and review of applications submitted for open positions on city boards and commissions. To be clear on this, what I've said before is I think that we should introduce these one, one meeting and then act on them the following meeting. So on this one, we have one member who has been unable to attend a lot of the meetings and she wants to be very respectful of the process and has offered up, if we have somebody else that is able to make them and can contribute and can do a better job of, of attending and really leaning into this. She said she'd be fully supportive with that. And so we will address that in the next council meeting. We do have, did you put the?
Harold has some, some motions for the, the Airport Advisory Board.
Oh, I'm so sorry, yes.
And then we have, and what you're speaking to is the Joint Airport Zoning Board?
Yes.
Okay. I know, but the way it's worded, he can at least talk about that aspect of it.
And on this, we have the email from the chair in your packets that stated the reasoning behind the alternate position that you're talking about.
Right.
Yes.
Yes, the first page, that's the one.
Yes.
Oh, gotcha. Perfect. So, okay, and this one, I, I'm sorry, I went off topic on this one.
I think tonight's action only would be the Airport Advisory Board.
That's correct.
Okay, perfect.
And up at the applications for the other members of different boards that might be considered at the next meeting.
Okay, great. My apologies on that one. Okay, so the first one is the recommendation per board, per board policies and procedures and for the motion made and accepted at the August twenty-twenty-two Airport Advisory Board meeting, please submit to the city council a recommendation to remove Ms. Bonita Turner as an alternate Airport Advisory Board member based on a lack of attendance, last attended September of twenty-twenty-one. It's really important that people are actually attending these and, and doing that part, so I.
On Harold had some comments because we were both at the board last night and they had some specific direction that they, that they actually took a motion and made a recommendation to the council that Councilman Stein has for us.
Councilman Stein?
At the advisory boards regular call meeting last night, in addition to the change that you just read from, they requested that the city council review moving Mr. Brad Lauderdale from a voting position to an alternate position. Is that correct? And then moving Mr. Carlos Deion, excuse me, up from a alternate position to a voting position.
Did they give a reason why? Was Brad scheduled to be?
Yeah, Brad Lauderdale was the chairperson for that advisory board. And this year, due to the drought, he had to take most of his business out of the west, gone most times. He did, relay by way of, correct me if I'm wrong here, to be relieved or that he wanted to step down as the chairperson.
Yeah, you definitely asked if you were released with chair, but then we, one, because I asked kind of, okay, I understand what's his role on the board? What, you know, is there a desire to keep him on the board? And they said, well, look, every year, even when there's not a drought, during spraying season, he doesn't make meetings. When he was chair. And so they really need, they're concerned about making a quorum and activity. And they felt like he would be better to be in an alternate role for that reason. So the, the motions are to remove the lady that was mentioned for non-attendance as an alternate, right? Then to move Brad from full to alternate and move Carlos, who is current alternate, to the fourth, the full board.
But the only thing we could do, if I did, would be?
I don't think so. I, I disagree with our chief secretary because I read it and I had the same doubt. Like I, we were in the meeting and I was like, well, guys, but this need, this probably will have to take place at the next meeting. But then I looked at the wording of the agenda and I was like, well, the wording doesn't, it's pretty generic as far as. Now, what was in your packet, obviously, is different and it's up to you what, what you do as far as how you want to be.
Well.
Yeah, of alternate Airport Advisory Board members, of applications submitted for.
And renew applications that.
Both of those board members' applications are already in.
I don't think you're, anyway, I think it's fine. I could be wrong.
Let's be safe then. Let's put it on the next agenda. That's coming up before.
Yeah, no, that's fine. It's all, we're all, I also have to remember this is the, this is the Airport Advisory Board.
They, they begin October third, which gives us.
One more meeting. Yeah.
So we could act on removing Bonita tonight.
Yes.
Yes, that's on there.
So I'd like to make a motion that city council remove Bonita Turner from the Airport Advisory Board as an alternate member.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, and then with the other open positions?
That, that last time began at six thirty and closed at six thirty-six.
What's that? No, I'm, I'm still on this one.
Are we still going with this other item?
Well, did anybody have any questions about the?
I got a question.
Yeah.
You had a motion in a second and you said all in favor. That's a close of the item.
Oh, that is a close.
So it's six thirty, it's a six thirty-six.
Fair enough.
My comment stands. Go ahead. Do what you like. You're the mayor of the council.
Because he asked a question.
Right.
Not to be made, but just for clarification, I noticed that on the airport, for the airport, the joint city.
Yes.
Airport zoning, does that person have to be a resident of Castroville?
No.
Because some of, I thought some of those had to be residents of Castroville and some were not residents.
No, that, I think.
Well, in the joint, there is two county positions.
Right.
And then we had the other two.
There are two that are proposed by the city, but the ones that are proposed by the city, I don't think they have the limits of the city limits. They were proposed by the city, but the limits of the, because J I C B, because its limits were as big as they are. We need to verify that, but I don't.
I believe we said it was a ten-mile radius.
Yeah, it's actually.
That's a zoning, yeah.
I don't know. I just, I'll have to go look at this. It's a good question. I don't think it applies, but I'll, I'll find out.
Because I noticed that she is losing the delegate, so.
Right.
And as of right now, unless we have that person that we were talking about that will resign, there's not any positions open at this time, I think until November, possibly. But we may have it the next meeting.
Well, I think, for clarity for the, for the council, the concern is the other person, one, I don't, the mayor has talked to the other person serving on the board. She's expressed a willingness to step down, one, and two, feels like she doesn't contribute a lot to that group because it's not her area of expertise or, or the area that she knows a whole lot about. And so, yeah, I respect that and I respect the fact that she shared that with us. So that's part of the reason that we're looking at this at this time, even though she's technically not up until November.
With the applications in there, that way we can have it on the next meeting. You do have it before you now so that we can, you can act on it.
And then also note Samantha Mers, thank you, for putting in her application for the, this is for the Library Advisory Board, which is very well needed.
Yes.
And then we also have Brian for the, for the Airport Advisory Board.
So we've now got, we now have David and his wife both serving on committees. This is what happens when you come to meetings. That's great.
Just beware. That's what happened to me too. See you here soon. All right, next item, the discussion and possible action on CIP items. So the first, so we're going to talk about fund policy and then specifically, generally about fund policy and then specifically about pool heating. So on the CIP, did you want to cover this part or you?
No.
Okay, so.
Because this, well, I mean, there were three buckets of money we talked about. I can cover what you and I talked about.
Yeah, why don't, why don't we talk about that?
Okay. Okay.
So we, I'm sorry, let me, let me preface this. So we've been talking about allocation and trying to figure out the best way to allocate the money. So the three buckets that we discussed were.
Well, yeah, okay. I just want to be clear. This is your, this is kind of your thought process on how you think this money should be spent.
Yes.
It's not, and I don't disagree with you, but it's not necessarily one that I share. But I did, we did clarify like what it, what it is. So three buckets of money, kind of thinking to help the council think about the policymaking process and how, when I come to you and say, hey, we got excess dollars or there's money here or this in one category or another, you know, maybe how to better differentiate how to utilize those funds. The mayor's proposed, or was proposing to me, that, that we break it out kind of as follows. So the CIP funding, which is our bond issues, those are actually all dedicated by the bonds themselves. Now, the language is somewhat generic, so it's like, for instance, it doesn't say for a bathroom at Lions Park. It says for park improvements at, you know, or within Castroville, which can include a lot, a host of park improvements. So the good, the good news is that there is some latitude as far as the bonds. But you are restricted by the covenants of that, of the bond issue. You can't use money for purposes that were not identified by the bond or the bond sale. So that, sure, so for one bucket of money is that, those CIP funds, the bond funds, and that should be for capital improvements that are related to, to the purposes of the issue of bond. The other funded money, you know, bucket of money, if you think about that, is the excess reserves. So fund balance reserves, or like we talked about at the end of this year, where we're going to have excess funded reserves. And the proposal from the mayor was, let's look at spending those mon, those monies on quality of life improvements. Let me know if I'm going to speak. Quality of life improvements. So enhancements that are not covered in the CIP, but other things that, that can be tied back to a quality of life improvement for our citizens. And then the final buck of money, bucket of money is the federal funds that we have from the ARPA, from the COVID monies. That's about seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars roughly. And those funds, the mayor proposed, we use those for planning efforts and economic development. And again, I think that was, I don't think any of those are bad suggestions, but they are, they're kind of just suggestions on how to think about, maybe if we were to categorize those buckets in that, in that manner. It somewhat restricts you to saying, okay, well, if it's the ARPA funds, we're going to look at, is it economic development? Or is it some type of planning effort that isn't funded by the CIP or elsewhere?
So I was, I was asking Scott, based on his experience, how has he dealt with it in the past? And he's already talked to us about how he's approached the, the fund balances that are just the difference between what we expected to, to make and what we actually made and what we expected to spend, what we actually spent. Good accounting practices would leave a bucket of money at the end. So, and, and that was his recommendation. How he's dealt with it is on those quality of life improvements.
Oh, one, well, yeah, one-time expenditures. It isn't always quality of life. For me, like anytime you use a budget, the, the excess budget reserves, it's things that, that, it could be a piece of equipment, for instance, or something else that isn't necessarily directly tied to quality of life, but isn't tied to, it is tied to efficiency or some service expansion that you want to do or something else. But the idea is that it's not, I mean, the big key is it's not operation cost. You don't take one-time money and create a position with it. Oh, we got four hundred thousand and we can afford to hire two people? No, it's one, because you don't know if next year it'll be there. You hope it will, but you don't know that. So it's, it's meant for one, the, the big issue is it's meant for one-time purchases, which a lot of times are quality of life. You can kind of make that tie.
We're moving something up that's on the CIP plan for subsequent years if you feel like you want to prioritize it moving up closer. And then with the ARPA funds, and this is, this has been really baking my noodle. This is money, so the first two buckets of money are really because city staff has done a phenomenal job of cutting costs and saving money where possible and the fact that the city's done really well over the past year. So the income was significantly more than what we expected and the, the costs were less. So I, I believe that that's a strong strategy for that. With the ARPA funds, they were specifically for impact from COVID. And, and I think that honestly, if you look at it like this, the way that we've been most affected by COVID recently is that people want to move out of the cities and they're moving this direction. And so I think that this is a, an approach, if we use this to deal with some of that growth, especially because we're years behind on it in doing planning efforts with, with our city attorney, with Bryce, with Scott Sky. Sorry, I've been teasing him about that. Bryce has been doing a great job, but doing things like that, doing some of the preparation, some of the design work that we've looked at, I think that that's, that's a great use of that fund because it is not taken out of anybody else's pocket. It's not taken out of any other budget. This is federal funds that's being sent to us that I think the most appropriate way for us to use that is in planning it in preparation for the onslaught that is in front of us. So we'll dig into more specific details, but.
Food for thought.
Food for thought. Do you have, and so let me ask you, is that, do you feel like that's a solid strategy? Do you have any other recommendations to, to ways to look at this?
The ARPA funds, when, when they were announced, were supposed to be to help make up for problems that the city experienced because of COVID.
Yep.
We've done some things like that already. We've got a relief program now for utilities. But I don't think we should close the door on, maybe, there may be something that comes up that we may want to consider using that money to fix. And if you close the door and say it's only going to be for development, then we'll be shut out of doing that. I'd kind of like to keep that door open.
Well, I don't think these are hard, these are more policies and it would be just general direction. We have a large fund balance from, from the normal stuff for quality of life improvements or other things that just need to be done. So, and this is really, it's more for general direction. So I don't think it's closing the door on anything.
Well, and again, this was food for thought is the way it was presented to me. And I think it's, again, it's your mayor kind of sharing with the council, here's the way I look at it. Doesn't necessarily mean that it has to be the way that you as a council look at it, but I, I think it's as good as any other approach that one could probably think of. We will have a meeting, probably at the first meeting in October, first or second. We'll, we'll kind of work on the agenda, but we'll have a plan, a workshop to look at that CIP list again. Look at the excess fund reserve that we'll have. We'll have a really good idea of the exact amount by then. Won't be the audited amount, but we'll have a really good idea of what we're showing on our books. And so we have, and then we can also talk about ARPA. But I think the intention was just kind of think about this and, and if you have your own strategy, your own policies, absolutely, you know, feel free to let the mayor know.
So if you, and I don't want to put you on the spot, if you haven't thought this through, if you have and you have ideas, then please bring it up.
Well, a little bit what you said is I think if we say, okay, this money is going to go here and you kind of limit yourself what you do, to me, I think it's good for the thought that we're, this is one way we are affected. So this is one way we could use the funds, but I guess I, to me, it's just one big melting pot. And we don't limit yourself to, to only using this money for this, for this, for this. We can understand in our own minds that, yeah, we're perfectly justified in using these funds for this reason. If that really hurts, it's just sort of the, of the utility relief, that was, you know, a really good example. That was, that was one black and white. But I don't know, I think it's really to get into a workshop and let's go over that CIP list again, plus watch change since then. Because like you said, development's coming quicker, maybe we can use some of these funds to get these plans out of the door quicker than we have. And that's a good suggestion also, but I think those are things we can talk about.
Well, and I think that my intent with that was more leverage, if there's any limiting, it would be limiting us from spending anything out of our normal fund reserve, our non- it would be limiting us from spending anything out of our normal fund reserve, our non-ARPA, on things like that because new should pay for new. And so it's really more limiting in that direction. So I just want you to think about, like, what is the strategy that you would use? And we need to figure out a way to prioritize it. And so that's good discussion. Anybody else?
Not, not on a principles basis. I have an idea and then we'll get to that at the workshop.
Privee?
Same here because I hear, I see this and I've always been trained that when you earmark, it's immediately hands off and it goes in that channel and stays in that channel. So, yeah, at the, at the workshop, you know, we got to be careful and walk that fine line because we don't want to shut that door.
For sure.
It occurs to me, I want to make sure y'all know, like, that with the ARPA funds, I, just as a reminder, you may recall this and apologize, but what we selected was the, the, at the last minute, the feds said basically, if your entitlement amount is less than $10 million, then we're going to assume that you had a revenue loss. And again, I think of it as like the alternative minimum tax. It's just the dumbest thing ever, but that's not a, that's just my off-the-cuff decision.
It's not a criticism of our government.
Not at all, not at all. I love free money. Give me more. But anyway, they said that you could just treat it as a, a revenue loss despite the fact we had, never had a revenue loss. And it goes directly to general fund and there's minimal reporting. So we did minimal, literally, when I say minimal is a couple pages of, of check boxes, that's it. That's all we have to report and then we get $720,000 in our, in our general fund. So there are no, currently, there are no strings attached and you're right, if you as, you could establish a policy as a group and said, we're, this is how we're going to treat that money. Now, one of the things I would counsel you is that even though they said we'd just put it in our general fund, my strong recommendation from staff would be, let's look at what the approved uses of those ARPA funds would have been. And even though we don't have to report it or anything else, if, let's look at, when we have that CIP, I'm going to guide you down that direction and say, okay, these are the things that you could have legally used them for, and these are the things on your list that meet those. And if it's all one bucket of money anyway and you've got enough money to do all of it, let's say that we use this money for this. Let's earmark it for that purpose because it's the feds and they're slippery and I don't trust them.
If they don't cut, if they come and do an audit and they use their standard with the different projects and everything, and they see us spending it on something that wasn't within the list, we could get slammed with a huge fine.
Even though they said we won't be, even though we said we won't be, we're, we're falling.
Oh, yeah. It's a caution, yeah.
I just, I think it's a good precaution to take, especially if those funds are, if, if, once we go through our workshopping and you've identified things that would fit anyway, that's what I would recommend you do. But we, we'll, we'll get there in October.
I've been given free money by the federal government twice and both times they came back for it.
Yep, taxes.
Oh, goodness.
Oh, yeah.
Fortunately, I could give it back.
All right, any other discussion on that? Okay, the next item, Scott, do you want to cover this on the pool heating?
Yeah, pool heating, okay, so we have, we're still on item 15, pool heating. So nothing's really changed. I think the thing that's changed is Phil is back, welcome back, Phil.
COVID-free.
What's that?
COVID-free.
Yeah, COVID-free. It's very important. And Harold is back. He made it safely from his journey, white-knuckled it through some storms, as I hear, during, when we were all peacefully enjoying our meeting on the 23rd of August. And I'm now officially a year older, so. So nothing's really changed from that presentation, except that we have the full council here to, to think about this. The items that were sent to you via email and they're in your deal, I can bring them up if you'd like to, or I can just talk to them. Basically, in your packet, there were two letters to support. One was from the diving coach, one was from the, the school district. We are still as staff trying to work with the school district to get some good, hard numbers on what they were spending. There was, there was a meeting held with their finance office, with the assistant athletics director, and then of course, there's been multiple meetings with the swim coach. Swim coach is brand new. I think the, the finance person we worked with is fairly new as well, maybe brand new. So we're, we have not got the, the, the figures, but what we have been told is that the amount they were spending on the travel aspect of it, the bus, the gas, the driver, was considerable. And, and what I interpret that to mean is it could have been as much or more than their contract with the other school. And that's good for us because honestly, obviously, it's a lot closer. We don't have a nice facility and we have a, we have a decent facility, but it's not an Olympic, you know, size tournament quality pool like they were going to. And I'm very cognizant of that and I don't, you know, I'm sure the school district is as well. But there are a lot of benefits that our little pool does have, and if we heat it, I think that would be of even greater benefit to them, but...
It is, it is sufficient for training.
Yes, it is.
It's not a competitive pool, but it's a good training pool.
Well, and they already use it from time to time. So we, it's not like they don't use this at all, they already use it from time to time. So we have two letters, we're working on getting actual numbers. In your packet as well is a brief PowerPoint, just told you what the upfront costs are. Your total upfront costs are right around $53,000. We'll call it 55, to be safe. That's equipment and installation, gas line extension and an upgraded meter. And then your ongoing operations and maintenance costs, there's not a total here, but your total is around 45,000, we'll just call it, on an ongoing basis. And that's, we believe that's conservative. Now, obviously, and part of the reason we believe that's conservative is our plan would be to close the pool in the first part of February, middle of February at the latest. And so you avoid a lot of the really, really cold periods doing that, generally speaking, as long as you don't have anything crazy with the weather happen. So we think that that would be able to put it in control. My advice to you all, and then this is kind of as far as the lead time, it's a two to four week lead time on parts, there's really no impact to operation. And the estimated completion, at the time this was written was November of 2022, I think you can add a month, it might not be till December now. But my advice to, strong advice to the council is, if this is something that you want to pursue, I would pursue it on the basis that that O and M cost is the level of your subsidy that you're willing to do for the pool. I would not recommend that you think about it as a revenue generating opportunity or that somehow it's going to cover its cost. Some part of its cost will be covered, the diving coach is going to pay us some money, the school district is going to pay us some money. But I don't know what that amount is, and if I were in your position as a policymaker, you know, what if the school district runs one, you know, what if they get a better deal somewhere else or a new coach or a new whatever, and they decide to go somewhere else? You have to kind of do this on the idea that we're willing to subsidize this. And being, again, a newbie, someone who's not been in the community, the community did heat the pool, that's what's crazy. Y'all had a heated pool at one point in time and it was ripped out. And for whatever reason, so my other strong, you know, recommendation is if you choose to do it, commit to, like, we're committing to this, we're going to do this, we're not going to put it in and rip it out like idiots. So, but all in all, again, that's kind of the basis of the presentation. I will say, the pool this time, it's not something you can count on, but this particular year, and in every community I've worked in that had a pool, the pool was subsidized. It was, it was like flowers at the grocery store. You're not going to make any money on them, they're there because they bring people in the door. Pool is one of those quality of life amenities that a lot of people want, a lot of communities want, and it's subsidized. This year, we accidentally made a profit. And that's the way I would, I would treat it, it was an accident because it doesn't normally happen, but we actually, I think we, you know, normally, our cost is around 116, it was a little bit lower, our profit's a little bit higher, we actually turned a profit this season, so.
That's one of those things, I think, as, you know, as meticulous attention to detail as I normally like, I would love to dig into that more and understand how we accidentally did that. And I think that honestly, it's because of the attention to it, it's because of the personnel and a little bit of luck.
A lot of it boils down to labor, labor costs. We actually had a few, we were able to get by with a few folks and we really managed over time and stuff. Our pool manager out there, I think it's her third or fourth year, I think we're going to lose her year after next, we've got another one in training, but she's, she's gotten better and better every year.
It's phenomenal, yeah. So on this item, I, I want to be really clear about this because I think that there's a little bit of confusion. I actually brought this to council when I was on the Parks and Rec Board, and I support, I think it's a great idea to do it, if we can afford to do it. And my recommendation at that point was, because somebody else was paying for it and because all of the cost, all of the risk was on them, I'm like, let's do it. Well, they didn't end up doing it and now the risk is on us. And so what Scott's saying is that, that he believes that the risk exposure is $45,000 a year. It's less than that.
Yeah, I think that's a conservative number.
That's a conservative, it's a very conservative.
Plus, you got to figure revenue, revenue on top of that.
Right. But you would have to look at that as the potential for offsetting that, the potential investment that we would make into that. If we made a decision right now on that, I think that's the decision that you need to make.
We would also have the ability to alter the schedule if needed in the future.
As long as the, the service that we're providing, like...
Was in construction.
Yeah, I'm concerned about taking care of our kids and then burning them.
No, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about unforeseen consequences and reacting to situations.
Right. Actually, let me start with Herb.
I think we've been talking about the pool for way too long. We've been doing this now since 2018. We, we've had a number of plans and we haven't followed through for various reasons, council wouldn't support it, everybody had good reasons for what they decided to do. But I think this, the moral of the story is, I think this pool will be good for the city by having it heated. I think it would improve our relationship with the Medina Valley Independent School District. They would certainly want to partner with us. We don't know yet what that means in terms of dollars, but whatever it is, it's good, it's better than no commitment. And I know that when the decision is taken, if the decision is taken to, to heat the pool, then I believe we'll get a commitment out of the school district. The private clubs, Joseph Winkler was the motivation behind that and of course, he's died, but the commitment is still there, the, the clubs are still functioning, the parents still have the same wants and desires, and they really are fired up about trying to, to get Joseph's desire brought about. So we've got a lot of support, but as the mayor pointed out, that doesn't produce a lot of money. They're looking to us for the money. So in my mind, it boils down to an issue of, are we willing to take the risk to invest $54,000 of capital to heat it and then turn the keys over to the mayor and the city administrator to watch the cost because we don't know what gas is going to cost? I mean, we still don't have a dollar figure. This number in this briefing has been changed. Started out at $12,800 a year, it went to $24,000 a year, and now it's up to $35,000 a year, and we don't know what gas is going to cost. So this number may or may not be right.
Guaranteed it's wrong.
That's right.
Well, we don't know why.
It's probably wrong, it's probably understated. But as long as the city leadership and the city staff have the key, I'm sure that the citizens of the city will understand, when it becomes not economically viable to keep the heat on, they can turn the key off. And, and that stops the expense for that year. And maybe we'll be fortunate, maybe, we don't know what the weather's going to do, maybe we'll get a break. But in any case, I, for one, am very supportive of trying to move this forward. I agree with the mayor, there's a lot of risk here. But I believe we've got risk containment, if we invest that authority in the city staff and the mayor, they can turn it off if they need to, and maybe they can shorten the season.
So is that a motion?
If you want a motion, I don't think everybody's finished talking, but that's all I've got to say, I support.
Me? Yeah, discussion. Oh, actually.
Hi, guys. Go ahead.
I, I, I'm just trying to clarify. We typically do a motion, second, then discussion. Sometimes on items, we'll just do discussion. Are we doing a motion, a second, and then discussion?
Well, let's, let's take a motion and then we'll get into discussion. So Councilman Dyer, you had a motion?
I move we approve an amount not to exceed $55,000 to provide the capital to buy the equipment and install it to heat the pool.
In honor of my friend Joseph Winkler, I'll second that.
Great. Point of clarification, so that is capital expense and then we also have the O and M on top of that.
I think, I thought I heard the city administrator say we shouldn't be overly concerned about the O and M at this point, it's separate, right?
Well, that would actually be a budget amendment because that is not in our budget right now, so did you want to modify the motion to include the O and M cost not to exceed?
I'd be happy to do that, I just wasn't sure you wanted that big of a number. I would, I would be happy to modify my motion to $55,000 not to exceed for capital and $47,000 not to exceed for O and M cost for this coming year.
Second is amenable.
Okay, great. Further discussion? Back to Phil.
They heat the pool one time and then they took it out. Now, why? Is it because, you know, if you look at people who use the pool at the beginning of the summer and the end of the summer, it drops all the commensurate. And so was that the reason? They, they heated this pool and they had very few people use it. So I think if we found that in this month, that you only had 10 deep out there excluding the teams that used the pool, now you go back to, you have this dive team, how much is the dive team? Right now, they're using it, they're continuing to use it without a team. And yes, there's a few months there where they can't get this one year ago, oh, but they can, right now, they're continuing to use it. Would it be more comfortable with warmer? Yes, but why is that worth them to keep this going? And then the school, the problem is, we don't even know from the school, if, even if we heat this, that they're going to use it. So now...
No, they, no, they have given a letter of commitment that they're going to use it. When we heat it, they're coming. Now, for how long and what they're going to pay, I don't know yet. But they are going to use the pool if we heat it.
So if they, so if they're not even willing to support the project, so in other words, financially, so if they, if I just knew that they were really engaged in this and yes, if we do this, they're willing to support it somehow. But, but I guess I'm a little nervous about going and doing this without even knowing for sure that people, because right now, yes, it's the two groups. Now, you say, well, the one that Joseph was involved in, that would be a third group, but are they really serious about that they, because I can tell you, these private clubs, when they go places, they play, they pay decent amount of fees to support these because they're committed to it. The way you really get committed to it is, is help pay the cost. But what makes me nervous also, so as we, the city council did this, spent the money back then even more so than what we're spending inflationary, taking into account. And then they shut it down. Well, I'm a little nervous, the reason they shut it down is that people just weren't using it. And they realized it was a very expensive thing when people weren't using it. Okay, so I guess I'm a little, I would like to see, in your discussion, you mentioned you're going to call the school district and actually, you think by our next meeting, they would be able to tell us?
I don't, I don't know.
You think there's a possibility?
We were supposed to have had numbers by the end of the day yesterday.
Okay.
And the follow-up today, when there was a phone call, they was, we're still gathering those numbers.
So possibly by the next meeting then? Because I think if they came back and said, listen, you know, we'll give you 100 bucks for Phil, we'll give you $10,000, I think that still, I don't mind supporting it.
Well, again, you're directing your comments to me, if you have a motion and a second on, on the floor.
Well, we're still discussing.
So, yeah, I know, but...
Yeah, so my, my thought is that we at least wait another meeting, it's not going to hurt us to wait then and get a little bit better feel for how, how committed are these different groups, including the dive team? How much are they willing to pay additional fees? But how much are they really committed for us to put in this heater? Because I'm a little nervous about if we build it and then no one uses it.
Thank you. Further discussion, Councilman Carrick?
I mean, we voted, like Herb said, we voted on this before, yeah, another group may have been paying for it, but we've got to support our kids, we really do. We want our dive team who, according to what the email, one letter said or email, that we had winners go to nationals and win. And so why, why don't, why won't, we should let them train at home. It'll, it's beneficial for us. I know a lot of older people that like to do water ther, aquatic therapy with their arthritis, their rheumatoid arthritis, with all their broken stuff, and it helps, and a heated pool, that helps a lot. So we get those individuals to use the pool here. So we get those individuals to use the pool here. There's a lot of pluses. There's a valve on the gas, right? So if the temperatures aren't low, we valve it off, right? So just, I think it's a beneficial thing for not just swim teams, but for our citizens.
All right, thank you. Councilman Stein, did you have any?
No, I just, I just wonder what seems to be a big, I'll put it on my part today, how miserable that's going to be with a very short future. How small an investment, you know, which if we're talking about tonight as a big investment, I think it's actually going to be a small amount in the future. I think they've got to consider that, but it's not as big a outlay. Not as big a risk as it seems tonight. Even if it weren't for a guy, I think the summer city doesn't need to.
Okay. Thank you. All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye, opposed.
Great, motion passes. I will tell you, I, I fully support heating the pool. My wife would be very happy with that. Out of respect for my friend Joseph Winkler, I did pursue this very hard. He had a passion for this. I will say that I think that this decision has come too early. I believe that we are at, I do believe that we're at risk with this. I don't know that it's a completely sound decision, but it is absolutely yours to make. I would not have made it without the additional information, but that is your prerogative, and I respect that greatly. So thank you for all of the thoughtful consideration.
And for, for the record, I'm 100% ambivalent. I don't, I really, it's not that I don't care. It's just that, you know, we're staff. We're going to do what you tell us to do. I, I just, some, some communities will, will do this type of thing for equality of life amenity, and they recognize they're going to have to subsidize it. And that's, that was mine advice. So good, good job, guys.
Great.
Was the vote four to one or five to?
Four to one.
Four to, four to one.
All right, next item.
That started at 6:39 and closed at 7:11.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is discussion on process for proposing future agenda items. So I wanted to go over this really high level, talk about the intent with this, and then get your guidance on how effective you feel like this is. So I put out a, a request that you fill out a, for any new agenda items, you fill out a request for it ahead of time. That gives us a chance to, to look at it, make sure that we've got all the information for it. We have, so Councilman Dyer put in some, some agenda item requests. We put those immediately onto the pending agenda list, and then what I had asked for here is the subject matter, the background, and additional information. So this is really trying to set it up so that we've got as much information as possible. One of the things that we do have to do is prioritize, and it's not just the length of the city council meetings, although it is that, but it's also the amount of time and effort required from staff. And so I think it's really good if we start doing things very purposefully. If everything's a priority, then nothing's a priority, and so this is helping us prioritize that. The other thing that it does, I, I put this on as, I put this on as, what I'd like to do is to have you make these requests, and so we, in working with the city administrator, we had pushed out some items that we felt were not priorities at that point, that we had higher priorities, things that staff had to do, and so we pushed them out. But I don't want to make that unilateral decision, and I don't, I don't believe that our ordinances actually support that. So part of this is to have that discussion about future agenda items to make sure that I am not pushing things out inappropriately, and so we can have discussion about that, and if there's something on a, on a subsequent agenda item that I don't feel like we have that, I'd like to get into a rhythm where I can discuss that and say, I don't think that we have the detail for this. I don't think staff has the time for it, but it opens up the discussion during the council meetings so that it's not a, it's not, it is something that, that council agrees with the prioritization, and that way we can respect staff's time and, and continue to move forward efficiently.
The idea is to set, to set up a process that all the council buys into that is for putting future agenda items from council so that the mayor doesn't feel like he's just doing things.
Yeah, I can't be the Darren Trow, and this is, this is a lot of me putting accountability on myself so that I'm not, so that I'm not controlling that portion of it, and so that we can be in agreement. Some of the additional details on here are really to help clarify that, something that I had asked. This is actually, I'm on the board for ACOG.
Do they have a copy of this in front of them?
Yeah, it's, actually, if you look at Agenda Item 6A, or no, sorry, 6B. Look at Agenda Item 6B, and it's got the format. It's the same one that I had emailed out to you. So at ACOG, they always identify if it is budgeted or if it requires a budgeted amendment. And this was something that I wanted to get from city staff, because there have been things that have come in front of us from city staff that, that it's not clear if this is something that we already put in the budget or if they're asking for additional money to support it. So that one specifically was for staff, but I think that we also need to look at it from our standpoint. Are we asking for something that is already budgeted that we just feel like we need to move it up in priority, or if it is going to require additional funds? And then obviously, any attachments. The other one, so urgency and impact. If you think about, I think Scott had mentioned this, about the, was it the MacArthur Decision Matrix?
Yeah, you're close. Yeah, Eisenhower.
Eisenhower, thank you.
Eisenhower Decision Matrix, yeah.
So it's looking at, is it a high priority? Like, is the urgency, is this something, if we don't decide now, it's going to cause us issues? I'd like to further refine that so that we can, right now, it's, it's very subjective, and I think everything that I've seen so far has been either a four or five on both, and I don't think that's necessarily the case. But I think that we can define that to say urgency, and, and we'll figure out what that looks like. If you have any ideas, then, then please bring that up. And then impact is, if we don't do this, then it could cost us money. If we don't do this, then it could cause service failures. If we don't do this, there's some negative thing. So it's from total disaster to really no change to, to what we're providing to the city. That's kind of what the range is, but I'd like to further refine that to help have that conversation so that we can talk about the priorities. Does that, does that make sense how we're kind of going about this? Okay, any questions about it? Any issues with it?
Is the goal to do, to develop a collaborative form that everybody, because I know this form's out on the teams, right? Y'all have access to it. Is your request to your council members that they look at that form and provide you feedback and maybe print it off and mark it up?
Yeah, look at the form, look at the process, look at the intent, and help make it better. So this is, this is a proposal. This is not a you must, shall do this. This is a, I think this is a good direction. Councilman Dyer had it.
I wrote a letter to the mayor when he put the form out, and I'd just like to clarify, because I know the council hasn't read my letter. I, I fully support what the mayor's trying to do in terms of establish prioritization. Everything can't be number one. I agree with that. However, every person sitting on this dais has a special privilege because they're an elected official. Texas Local Government Code says that because we are an elected official, we have the privilege of submitting agenda items to the mayor and the city administrator. That's a privilege. And the mayor has the responsibility to decide whether that item can go on the next meeting or if it's too late or there's too much on there. The mayor has the option of pushing it out to the next regularly scheduled meeting. As long as that privilege is honored, no matter who submits an item, they should always get their item on either the next, the first meeting or the second meeting, and they should be exempted from having to put numbers on there to code them, because they're automatically a different category above anything that the city submits. So I, I would, I would agree that this is probably a good thing. I think it will help. But as a council member, I don't feel I'm required to go through the budget and identify specific places where the money's going to come from if I want to get something on the agenda so we can talk about it. I don't believe I have to assign urgency codes to it, because by law, it's urgent because I'm an elected official and I want it on the agenda. Each one of us has that privilege, and we shouldn't be asking other members of the council to vote on what one member wants to do. That's, I think that would be counter to the law. So overall, I support it. As long as we protect the privilege of each council member and the mayor, he has the same privilege, because he's an elected official, to submit an item and get it taken up within two meetings. That's my only concern.
The two-meeting thing, is that your recommendation, or is that your understanding of state law? It's in the ordinance, just within two meetings?
Says, it says if it can't be on the next regularly scheduled meeting, then it should go to the one after.
Okay.
That's not the exact wording.
I'm going to, I'm going to seek a legal opinion just to verify that. For the benefit, for your benefit, mine, and the rest of the council.
And that shouldn't change the, that, that should not change the empowerment of city council. There is the question of what you are allowed to do, what you are legally allowed to do, and what you should do. So it's not always the same. I'm allowed to do a lot of things that would be counterproductive to the efficiency of working of the city. And so this is really, if you think about it, not as, this is not a limiting factor. This is an empowering factor. This is something for us to determine what the priorities are. Again, city staff, we're taxing them with a lot. There is a lot going on in Castroville right now. And so it's trying to figure out what that prioritization is, and that the, the discussion keeps you empowered to be able to have that, that conversation. And I think that the, I guess the best-case scenario is that we have that conversation together. We arrive at a, like, you submit something, and I say, Herb, I, I don't know that this is the right time. We can talk it over based on these kind of criteria, and then we would come to a unified decision.
Well, is your concept that, that all agenda, because I, which, by the way, if this is the case, I would support it, for what it's worth. But is your concept that all agenda items would kind of follow, follow a similar path so that, you know, right now, you all as council members receive an agenda summary form that staff prepares, if it's a staff-presented item, and then ideally, you have one for the mayor if it's a mayor item, and then you would have one from, I know we've asked recently for council members to submit something similar. So is your concept that we would all use a similar format?
Yes.
So that when the council, from a policy standpoint, you're looking at this item, and you can glance at this agenda summary form, and it gives you all the high-level detail, but it also helps you understand where it fits on your own, what you define as the importance scale.
And it becomes, absolutely. It becomes that point of conversation. That way, you know if it's budgeted or if it requires a budget amendment. That way, you know what city staff feels like is the, the priorities, and as we start to define them and make them more objective, less subjective, then I think that it helps bring clarity to each one of the items.
Now, this is part of what a balanced scorecard does, which I fully admit, I have done nothing with, that I know I've got to, you know, so again, it goes back to time. I've got to get machine in. Am I going to get the mayor and sit down and do that until it has come?
Way back then, when I first got to council, we were supposed to fill out the other items, and it said, it was a budget item, things like that, so I have no problem with that. There were some things that I, I know I'm going to bring to council, but they're not a rush at all. If you get filled within a couple of months, I don't have a problem with that. It's nothing to date, it's just something we should discuss. Other things are urgent, and if I tell you this is urgent for this reason, then I would expect, you know, as, as you've said, we do agree with you, Paul. And so I, I applaud your plan, because I've also been a meeting that's gone again, and I can't, that's because we have too many agenda items. So yes, be able to manage that agenda and fully support it then.
And I'm, I'm much less concerned with that portion, because we've all committed to that. I'm sorry. But I am very concerned with the, the impact that we have on staff. Now, one thing the council.
We've all committed to being here till midnight. Is that what you just said?
No.
Okay, good.
We've committed to, except for them, they've not.
Because I got in trouble for keeping us too late, so I want to make sure that we're on the record.
What I guess then, I was trying to be nice to staff also.
A way that, that Councilman Dyer did this, I really like. He said, all right, so these are the items, and he didn't necessarily put the urgency and the impact, but he said, I'd like to see this on the agenda in like this month, this meeting or that meeting. And so we put it, if you look on the pending agenda items, we've got them during one of those meetings where we think that it would fall. So that can be our point of discussion about the items, where they fall, and if something needs to be moved, then we'll have a discussion with the person that.
If the council member doesn't see an urgency for an issue and says, I'm not worried about when this gets done. I'd just like to see it put on for the next two or three months. That's your prerogative as a council member. But if you believe that it needs to be taken care of in the next two meetings, it's your privilege to say, I'd like it bumped up in the next two meetings.
I would love for y'all to use that, that pending list, because what we, you know, like tomorrow, my staff will meet in the morning, and we will go over not just the next agenda, but we'll look out as far as we can, three, four, or five months, and start putting stuff on there for future meetings. So it's a great opportunity for you as council. You have access to the exact same form. You can update it the same way we do. Paul?
I was going to state that the, not only is the staff going to have time savings, but we will too, because if I can read through all of the information before we get here, we don't have to have half-hour discussion.
Right. Well, I think about like some of the CIP items that we've approved, approved during the budget process, and they come in front of us. Those are the kind of things that we should be working out during that time, and then when they come up, you know it's already budgeted. It's already in there. We've already had the discussion. We picked it apart, and we can move on quicker. Councilwoman Martinez? Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I appreciate the interaction on this. We will continue to get better and more efficient at this. Next item is, where are we? Discussion on Possible Action on Allowing Sales and Construction Trailers for Upcoming Developments.
At 7:25.
At 7:25.
So we kick this off, do we make a motion on this first, or?
Well, let's, let's have some background on this first. We've talked about this before, but I think that it would be prudent to have.
It's, it's up to y'all. Again, if you want to move the meeting along, Robert's rules, you can make a motion, make a second, have any discussion you need. If the mayor chooses, I'll just give a brief information about it.
I prefer the brief on.
So this is the third time it's come to council, because y'all sat it down twice, and I did make it clear to, and I'm, I'm surprised Nick isn't here, and I think you may have just forgotten. I didn't remind him. It's not my job. But they have been very, I want to say, Alstation Oaks has been an excellent partner. They really have.
Absolutely.
I've really been, I've dealt with a lot of developers in, in the last dozen or so years, and I've just been really impressed with the Alstation Oaks group. They're just a good bunch of people. That said, their builders were, have some consternation about not being able to use a, a trailer. And so they came in with me a third time, said, can we please, pretty please, what can we do, right? And I told them the only way staff could support a trailer, a, a sales trailer, is if there was a time, because it's time-limited. And they said that building a house, building a model home, is taking up to a year, and with it taking that long, what they could do is at some point during that build process, they would place a sales trailer, and that sales trailer would only exist for no more than six months, and then it'd be whisked away. And then the model would be completed, and they'd move into the model home, and that was their proposal. I still, oh, so I can support that. That's what you have. You have a letter and description of what they're willing to do. I think those are good terms. Separate from that is a desire to have a construction trailer. Did you have a chance to talk to Larry Sider?
Yeah, he said that all of the builders that he's worked with, even on the bigger construction sites, they, they do, they'll like split. So the trailer would be used half for construction, half for a sales trailer, and so it's just kind of double function. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't do something like that. I will say, though, that.
Well, their, their construction trailer, for their point, what, what, two things. They've told me, they don't want the, they want the sales trailer separate from construction, because they want all the construction traffic down on one end, and they always put that at the opposite end from where the new homes are going back. And so that, they did kind of stipulate, if they're going to do a construction trailer, it'll be at the opposite end, and it has, it's time-bound as well, but the time-bound on that is like three years, because it will be, there'll be a construction trailer in the development for as long as the development, the houses are being built by each builder.
I honestly think with the, with the limitation on the, the sales trailer, moving to a model home, they're not going to put up anything, I mean, they're in the business of selling homes, and they're not going to put up anything. First of all, most of us are not even going to see that, so it's not like it's going to be an eyesore in our neighborhoods, and they're going to want to keep it as nice as possible to be able to sell homes. Otherwise, they will do a terrible job of that. So I, I think it's a good opportunity for us to partner well with them and concede on something that will help them out ultimately, and it will show our good faith.
And what I will ask, because I sense a motion about to be made, I have a feeling in the force, is that if there are any recommendations for changes to the terms that have been presented, that you would make that part of your motion, whether it's the first, the initial motion or the second to that motion. If there's any term changes, please let me know what those would be so we can capture them.
Can I make a motion?
Is there anybody else that would want to make a motion on that?
You don't want me to make one?
No, I, I'm just asking if there's anybody else that would want to entertain a motion.
We can have any discussion, and we want to hear your motion.
Yes, there will be discussion. Yes, there will be discussion afterwards. Yes? No? Okay, yes, please make a motion.
I can make a motion that the city council approved the amendment to the Alstation Oaks Development Agreement to allow construction of several vaults and construction trailer as presented in our package.
Right, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Great. Discussion. Councilman Dyer?
I'm all in favor of this. I, I spoke for it the previous times, and it got defeated, and I'm very pleased that Mr. Collins came back and had more discussion, and I think they've been a very good partner, and I believe they're keeping their word, and what they've told us here makes good sense to me, and I fully support it.
Right, discussion.
With the application of the time limit, I can support it.
Same here.
And, and I support it for the time limit, which I agree with, but also if you look at the criteria for the landscaping, the project, both, these people want to sell lots, and this, these are going to be nice pictures.
First impression?
Yes, so I'm all for it.
Great, I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Great. Thank you for all the work that you've been doing with them. Scott?
It is now 7:30.
It's now 7:30. I think that we were talking, are we going to forego the executive session, or no?
Yeah, so there, there was two items for executive session. One was a development agreement for the K-Lig Audit Group, they have run into a snag, and have asked to postpone that at least until the next meeting. No snags with us, our agreement's good, but they have some extemporaneous issues that are going on, external issues to, to their organization. So the other item is the CPS Gas Operations Contract, and discussing that both with our attorney and with the mayor. We have the ability to move into executive session should we need to, we can call an attorney and, and have discussion if you think there's things that we need to discuss, but by and large, the amendment that has been proposed has nothing in it that is really proprietary, or an issue, or something that can't be disclosed or discussed in open session, and so you're perfectly able to leave it in open session. I too want to recognize the very patient and lovely group from CPS, that's been here all evening, these four folks right over here.
They're like, we didn't sign up for midnight either.
Right. And we got to meet on 23rd, Chris Cox, and this is his better half, Melissa, who's with us tonight, so. Okay, so yeah, you can talk about it here, or you can adjourn, it's up to you.
I don't have a problem with talking about it here, I don't think there's anything that-
The benefit is, the CPS folks can answer any questions if you have, if you have.
Okay, so we are going to skip over the executives, or we're, we're going to pass on the executive session, and then the next agenda item is consider possible actions resulting from the items motion and legally discussed, or not discussed, in executive session, and that will be the CPS Gas Operations Contract Amendment.
Can we go over terms, or?
Please.
So y'all may recall, we, one, the fact that this contract's coming up for renewal, and that it was in September, I crept up on it a little bit, I swear, I thought it was going to be, that we had, that the electric contract came first, and then the gas contract, and I just had my information wrong. And so, once again, CPS has been a good partner, and kept me, kept me honest this whole time, but, so when it was time for renewal, we both kind of missed the date, and they, in the meantime, kind of did a deep dive into their operations and costs, and you may recall, I did a presentation to council about that, and what it boils down to is, their feeling is that they've subsidized our gas operations for probably quite a while, they really aren't pooping their total cost, and they estimated that in order to recoup their costs, there's going to be a significant cost increase, as much as, I don't know, it's like 80% or something like this, it was fairly high, right? 160%.
Yeah.
Double that. So it was 116, 116, 116%. So a significant increase over where we are today, and to their credit, you know, we had some back and forth, I was, you know, it was, we, we took immediate action to bring in Schneider. This isn't necessarily a forte, they're more comfortable in electric space, but to his credit, Steve has been calling other providers, other groups, to see if they would be able to assist us, and in the meantime, CPS presented the option of doing a one-year extension, which is what you have tonight in front of you. The one-year extension is not at the 116% increase, what it does is give both parties, CPS and the city, to look at this contract, negotiate terms, and come up with something that we can both live with moving forward. So staff is very much in support of what's been proposed. What we will be working on, probably over the next six months with CPS, is to get, come to terms on what they have to offer, and then we'll also be evaluating, okay, if the city were to do it internally, here's what that cost would look like. I fully anticipate there'd be significant upfront costs, because, you know, there's machinery, equipment, and training, and people that would have to be hired and purchased, but I don't know what those are, and so we'll do our best to get some good estimates by talking to other groups to do that, and then we'll also be looking at whether there's other third parties that would be willing to operate the system in a similar manner as what CPS does. So that's where we stand tonight. Again, what you have right now is a one-year extension, and there is a, kind of a summary letter that's provided with that, that goes over what the, the terms are. The initial term expires on September, September 30th, so that's this month. The one-year extension would go from October 1st to next September 30th, 2023. And as I said, it's very similar, I just said, both sides will work collaboratively, explore all options for Castroville's gas system beyond that term. The city, we, we will still, just kind of, under the same original agreement, we'll have a 90-day before the expiration of the term notice. Yes, I'm sorry, that was in the original agreement. The term does include a cost increase, the cost increase for operations would be approximately 13.65%, and if we're going to do this, unfortunately, we have to do it tonight, because it's, due to the terms of the contract, we need a decision by September 15th, and so that's also in that letter. Are there any questions about what's being presented, or any concerns, or any questions you might have for CPS?
Are there any other changes to the terms in the extension?
Not that I'm aware of, there was, I don't know if it's a change, I don't believe it's a change, but we talk about, so if you look at the, the term sheet, the fee schedule on included fee, there's the fixed cost of $10,032 per month, so that's the new rate. And then there's unforeseen costs, says city is liable for any major unforeseen costs arising from the agreement exceed the following amount during the term and any agreed extension, and that's not, or $20,000 amount. I did have our attorney review, she had no concerns or issues with the, with the agreement that's been presented.
Okay, so no change in-
It has been approved as to form, as they say.
Gotcha. So no changes to our, our-
Are you aware of any others?
Yeah, I don't- Other than the V, the 13.651%. Questions?
Any other questions?
Yes, please.
I want to make a motion, have we approved one-year extension of the contract?
Great, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. All right, so we are through the agenda, and Scott was a little bit wrong, we are adjourned